Planning Commission meeting to order. Most members are present, we do have one absent, so we have established quorum. I do need to administer an oath to anyone that plans on speaking at all during today's commissioning hearing. All you have to do is say "I do" after I administer that oath. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to the best of your knowledge to this commission?
I do.
Thank you very much. We have disposition of the last meeting's minutes as the first item on our agenda. Everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes to the best of their ability and recollection.
I would movely accept the June 20th meeting minutes.
Second that motion. Any questions, comments, all those in favor except for the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Disposition. Okay, we have no cases on the agenda today, that's correct. Mr. Paskey, and Mr. Leib. No cases today, correct.
Correct.
Just want to make sure. Appreciate it. Do have communication. It is concerning a redevelopment of an existing restaurant in East State Street. What was the Pizza Hut location? It is to, request is to be converted into Tim Hortons. I'm not sure which view is best informed on this item or not.
I can briefly go that, Mr. Schweitzer?
Schweitzer.
Schweitzer is here representing Geographics, he's representing Tim Hortons today, he'll speak here briefly.
Similar to, I think the last one went to the commission of that nature was the Advanced Auto Parts.
Advanced Auto.
Took down a restaurant.
Yes.
That's right.
Very similar in those regards where we're kind of taking the out parcels, defining a leased area and then making that area meet the requirements of today's current bulk controls, shade tree, et cetera. As you can see by the pictures that were submitted there, it is a combination, Tim Hortons, Cold Stone Creamery, and again, it's going into location of the existing Pizza Hut building on East State Street.
And the footprint.
I'm sorry.
The footprint of the building, replacement.
It is very similar to where it's at now. I think it may be a little bit further west, but I'll let the engineer speak to that.
All right, thank you for that intro. The representative that is here to speak on Tim Hortons, Cold Stone Creamery's behalf, if we could have you come to the podium where it is microphone, that would be, we used to have a table for your purposes, but...
I can't say I have not reviewed for bulk controls or anything yet on it.
Right, right. Well, this is preliminary communication, so I'm interested. You wanted to, I see you had a drawing it looks like to present, is that correct?
Yeah, I might apologize, I didn't bring these with me.
Okay.
If I could put up there, I could be happy to wear it in front of you.
Is this the same layout?
It's the same layout, I have in front of me.
Okay, that's fine.
The only, I don't want to leave, the only other thing I have is sort of have an overall of the whole shopping center showing where our site is on the shopping center, if that was of interest to anybody. That's the only germane piece of information on this big layout. It gives you a little bit better perspective on the whole development, so.
Bring it on by.
Right. Go ahead.
Okay, it's George Schweitzer. I'm a professional engineer and surveyor, I'm a consultant to Tim Hortons. They have two other gentlemen that I think that you'll end up seeing at some point in time, maybe at the next meeting would be Richard Sockle, who is their construction man. He was supposed to be here today and had a sort of a family emergency, couldn't make it, so, and then their real estate representatives got missing. They're a little bit more versed on their operation, but I can review most of that with you. My company is civil engineering and surveying. We are consultants, Tim Hortons, we probably have done, well, I don't know, if they have 50 to 75 of these throughout the Midwest and Ohio, we've probably done 95% of those form in terms of the site design layout, you know, civil engineering. But this one is a, it's on East State Street and it is a, the Pizza Hut itself is moving to a space inside the center interior, so that's what makes the site available. They are in contract with them, negotiations, I can't speak to whether they're actually in contract, I believe they are, because they wouldn't be this far if they weren't, but they haven't purchased property, they're simply in contract right now, performing due diligence type items. So, Tim Hortons obviously is, you may or may not be familiar with the concept, they are based headquartered, corporate headquarters in Canada. They have, again, they are in several markets in the United States, Columbus, Ohio being one, but they're also up in the Detroit area and up in some New England, New York areas, not necessarily city, but up closer to Lake Erie. They're in Erie, Pennsylvania, some other places like that. Tim Horton himself was a hockey player that died at a young age and happened to find, there's a foundation in his name. The Tim Horton's concept is they have three or four different summer camps and they sponsor underprivileged children to come to camp and invite them to do different things and that type of stuff, and they have an annual fundraiser too from their franchisees and consultants and things that we partake. So it's a, it's an organization based in Canada. I have never been to their headquarters in Canada, I can't speak for it, but the idea in Canada is that Tim Horton's coffee is, I don't know what I would compare it to here, but there's times you can see two of them opposite each other on the same corner of a street. I mean, they have that many locations, they're that well-known. Their primary product even in Canada is coffee. I mean, they sell it in take-home-to-brew type things, obviously they sell it hot right there in the restaurant. They have some other specialty drinks, but they're not the boutique type operation like maybe a Starbucks might be. They do have a few specialty drinks, but not anything on the line like they would have there. They have baked goods that are baked actually on the premises, so their operation entails, most of their, most of their operation, quite honestly, that the ones they have are 24-hour operations, and that means that they like to keep their, at a minimum, their drive-through open 24 hours. And the reason for that is, is because they have to keep somebody in there pretty much overnight to an employee or two to do the baking on the goods for the next day, so that it's fresh. So they're basically in that building 24 hours a day, whether or not they're open for business is, you know, is the other aspect. So what they generally do is keep the, attempt to keep the drive-through open for, you know, some late-night type business if it has to come. They would probably request to do that here, I don't know if that's an issue, but, I mean...
Well, that's an area. Drive-through is one of the issues I'd wonder, because, isn't our, we have a residential, might be, maybe it's not, maybe it's...
It's far enough away. You've got another, you know, you have East State Street and then you have the, these ones that are lots from, to the far east side.
Okay.
So they do have, you know, a walk-in counter type thing and they do have a drive-through. In this concept where they go with Cold Stone, there will be, I'm going to say, two separate counters, but it's really, I'm going to call it one operation.
There's no separation.
The dining room is not separate, the, there is one pickup window and you can order Tim Horton's products or Cold Stone products at the pickup window, so there's really no separation in the operation other than where you'd be directed inside. This building they're proposing is 45 seats total, you know, shared between the two uses there. Again, has a pickup window. The square footage on that, that's the designation on the plan, I believe the building's square footage to be just over 2,300 square feet. So they, as most restaurants do, they pack a lot of equipment, a lot of things into a fairly small footprint. As far as their location on the site, getting site-specific, they are fairly close, they are no closer to the, to propose to be no closer to the road than the existing Pizza Hut, so they are at about the same setback. From an east-west perspective, they are slightly, and I think that the distance is six to eight feet further, positioned further to the west than the Pizza Hut would have been. So, we've been out there, doesn't reflect on this drawing, we've done some surveying work and things. We think grading-wise, we're going to be right about at or slightly above the existing floor elevation when we're done, and it'll grade in there okay. We may need a slight, I'll call it raised curb, or maybe ramp up one side and ramp back down. I'm talking six, eight inches, I'm not talking about anything drastic, so, but we've looked at the grades and we think that this will work. This plan, the way it works for them is, I would tell you that if they were here, they might disagree, but 50 to maybe even 75% of their business is really through the pickup window. They do some inside stuff and it depends on, now, if they were right here close to campus, they might do more inside, but at that location, that would be a typical for them where the vast majority of their business is drive-through business. Their peak hours, if you look at what they do, they can try, they've got, their sales are set up, they can track every location and peak volumes and things, from 6:30 a.m. to maybe 9:30 a.m., you know, they're busy, and after that, if Scott were standing here, their real estate guy, he would say that, you know, we really, well, I'm sure we're open the rest of the day, but that's the truth. They do have sandwiches, they do have some soups, that type of product. I, you know, I'm not commenting on the, you know, they're known for their coffee and baked goods is the best way I can say it. Now, those are their peak hours. If they were looking at, we've done numerous ones of these where traffic may have been an issue, and, you know, if they're, if they're peaking at, you know, between those three hours in the morning, they're doing almost, I wouldn't say zero business, but very little business after their, they have a little bit of lunch, maybe a little bit of an afternoon for people wanting a, you know, late afternoon coffee or cold drink type of thing, but they really don't do a whole lot of other business during the day. So, on the other hand, the Cold Stone operation would be, you know, if they had a peak, would obviously be afternoon, evening type thing, and today would probably be a good day, but... So that it's, the businesses blend that way in terms of at least the peaks and things is a pretty good fit for them as far as the two of them being together.
It is a B3, so I mean, my understanding is there's no minimum setback, correct? What was that?
BM.
Oh, is it BM? I mean, I'm sorry, you're right. B3's on the other side.
Works the same way.
Yeah.
So, reading this actually, it's like 2,500 square feet, a little bit more than 2,300.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, you read the model 2,300.
They added that cool freezer in the back and they've enclosed it now, so they've put it in with the square footage, I would assume that's what that is.
I see, okay. Have to put the ice cream someplace, I guess. In terms of elevation, flood elevation, was the Pizza Hut actually at...
The existing, or the Pizza Hut that is there was actually awarded back in the late 90s or was granted by FEMA, a letter of map removal for the structure specifically. Because the Pizza Hut structure is being demolished, I contacted ODNR and they checked with FEMA to see whether the existing letter of map removal stands or not. I was told that they'd never had anybody ask that question before.
Ah!
It was hard for me to believe, but what they said is, the applicant or Tim Hortons, once their new structure is built, they could, they would have to reapply for the letter of map removal. They didn't, it's basically, from what FEMA was saying, it's more than anything, it's just a technicality, because the letter of map removal was based on a structure and that structure will be torn down. But yeah, so flood issues, it's already elevated and already, it's, that letter of map removal from 1998 was revalidated in 2009, and I expect that it would be revalidated. I double-checked the elevations of the flood in that area, the base flood elevation, and they look to be more or less identical.
Okay.
So, flood issues should not be an issue unless they're planning to do a basement, which I believe you're doing slab-on-grave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and we are a good distance from the R1, so that's not a problem.
Right.
Okay. We're not introducing another new curb cut, so traffic studies don't have to be done.
Right.
Use changing drastically from...
Well, I would say this is, it is, what's different to me is the circulation within the parking lot, because we didn't have the drive-through concept there before.
No doubt about it, the statement I made previous about the amount of business through the drive-through, depending upon time of day and, you know, different factors, but, you know, they believe in, if it's coffee and baked goods and that's, I mean, they have, you know, I'll say breakfast sandwiches as well, but if, you know, it can really move very quickly and it's not uncommon for them to have, you know, eight, nine, 10 cars potentially waiting, so, I don't particularly like this layout with this, what we call a racetrack around the building, but it does get them their maximum stack where the stacking wouldn't impact traffic that wanted to do something else. In other words, that's the reason we draw the cars there, because we're at, you know, we're at 14 cars drawn on there, and, I mean, they wouldn't appreciate me saying this, but if I was going for coffee and saw 14 cars in a drive-through line, I'd either go in or go somewhere else. So, you know, that, that's about a practical maximum, in my opinion. I don't think anybody's going to jump in that line and think they're gonna, but the point is, it's there, that's the reason that stack is like that, that it doesn't impair anybody else from getting on or off the lot or, you know, in the way. So, yeah, you're a little bit, if you're, if you're going to park and go in, I wouldn't say you're trapped, but you do have to back in and back out to be able to get back out, that's true.
I guess I would like to avoid some of the other areas that we have that become a circulating mess, you know, and it possibly can be done with signage and striping and what have you to kind of just establish this. And I believe we've made all these accesses right turn only exiting East State, but they can go to two different lines. You can go through Kroger and out or go back to the old malls.
Right. How does that, I was always curious about that signage there, we're talking about at the exit from the parking lot there is to East State Street, there's a sign that says "No Left-Hand Turn." But isn't the turn being made itself from a private drive where you can't control?
But it's because it's coming onto the public street.
Okay, so it's through the public.
And because we've had what we have, or, you know, crashes in this area, up and down the strip, so.
Although they might be, get dropped 6 o'clock in the morning at 9.
Right, right, exactly.
But that's all I would like to see, some clearly delineated how you have that traffic circulation.
You mean the striping part of it?
Yeah, I, I mean, there'll be, there's traditionally arrows on the pavement and some directional signings that they'll have, so, and not to minimize your point, but I think once you've been there once, you know how to get through the drive-through. But for those that haven't, I understand, there will be excellent signage on...
It's not just that, it's because there are so many other uses occurring, you know, we have other restaurants on the strip.
Cross-access.
And a bank and...
I was demonstrating by the picture right there. At least when there's, if there's overcapacity at the stack, it's not going to be on the street.
Right.
Again, I'd say 14 cars is a long way to wait for a cup of coffee, I guess.
I do know people miss the Cold Stone Creamerys.
Yes, they used to be here many years ago.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, I guess, is that a concern?
Wasn't that long ago.
Yeah.
That was two, less than two years ago, on Court Street, didn't have a drive-through service, but, or about two years ago.
Yeah. I mean, I'm a little concerned from a vacancy standpoint, which, I mean, really isn't the purvey of this commission, so this is more of, speaking as an opinion strictly, but the fact that we're bringing back somebody that could not succeed in town, what's the likelihood that one half of this is going to become vacant and we're, you know, I don't know. It's neither here nor there, so it's not really fair.
Maybe the location would make it work better.
Exactly. Well, you had the Taco Bell which moved out of uptown into a drive-through model for East State Street, so it could be a similar niche.
My only comment to that is that if the Cold Stone concept was not, whatever the right word is, pulling its weight, they might remove that out of there, but I still think, I mean, their restaurants are, I mean, they have many that are just Tim Hortons that are this size, and if they're successful, I think they're, I don't look at there being any problem with that, and I would bet they're probably, this is a leased site for them, so I would, I don't know the details, but I would swear it's probably a five, if not a 10-year lease minimum, I would think. That's generally the way they're structured.
Is Tim Hortons, is Tim Horton's the leaseholder, are they, is Cold Stone a subsidiary of them, or is that just another, a joint venture?
It's a, it's sort of a joint venture, brand name type thing. Tim Hortons will be the less O in this case, I'm sure, or less C, excuse me. The relationship with Cold Stone is simply, to me, to my knowledge, that's the only person that they've partnered up with like that, although they viewed, they've viewed other potential entities to do that with, and it happens to be Cold Stone that they're working with at this point in time, and have been for quite a few years now, but...
If you want ice cream in your coffee, it's an excellent opportunity.
Exactly, I'm sorry, we can't combine products.
Well, you can do that on your own.
Exactly. Paul, was one of your concerns the fact that this drive lane is, is basically, once you're in it, you're in it? There's no sort of escape, or is it...
No, it was more related to the circulatory traffic, the entire area.
Anybody to walk up would have to navigate to pass the cars on three of the four sides. I think that's the concept, right?
No, it was back to particular traffic.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think one positive thing that certainly will change circulation is the exterior movement of traffic outside of the parking area, so you don't have that overlap problem.
What do you mean?
See how you park inside.
It loops around instead of going through, usually there's a conflict.
Yeah, where the, some are stacked, it's stacking in the drive lane of the parking area.
I guess I would like to know how much closer it is to the road compared to, whatever that, is it Abrio's now?
Abrio's, yes.
Got a few different names.
I didn't think they moved it any to their normal...
I can't answer for Abrio's, I have...
Compared to the Pizza Hut.
It's, it's, it will be no closer.
No closer.
Say it that way.
To the road.
It looks like GameStop gets the closest.
Yeah, it's near the back, it's going to be, it's going to be further, closer, it's going to be closer than Abrio's. GameStop and the Long John Silver's, is that still even there?
Yeah.
They're all, they're all actually, close to the front there.
Manufacturing does or does not require front setback? I forget. I know B3 does not, but I forget manufacturing.
As long as People's Bank is at the city, it's just the...
It can only require a distance based on use.
And where's the right-of-way?
It's 25 foot.
For manufacturing?
Yes.
Okay.
And OU is the least...
It's not, no problem.
Suppose they know where the right-of-way is.
And they got the...
I assume they know where their right-of-way is.
As far as I know, we, when we widened East State Street, we took out all the right-of-way we could at that time.
That's why we don't have a sidewalk on the east.
On the north side?
I don't know, some of the stuff that was done is crazy.
I can tell you that from the records, from the existing right-of-way, based on the records, we haven't done thorough survey yet, but we're about 43 feet back from right-of-way for them.
That's good.
Okay.
Anyway, they're doing, OU is doing.
And as John Paskey alluded to in the introduction, all the bulk controls would be in accordance with whatever the final determination is of the property lease line as opposed to the overall property site. And that's how, same goes with tree commission and...
That's how we've been treating the outlots on the parcels on East State. We look at the established lease line and consider that area, and then we go from there.
Okay.
Okay, and this is a Title 41, is the next, is the process? No.
Yes.
Well, I thought Title 41's usually required an abatement of an OR zone, but I may be wrong.
It may not be because it's under 5,000 square feet as well, so it may, oh, in Title 41.
Okay. Always forget the details on that one.
Um, just, I guess here's a thought, this business, or I guess, sorry, manufacturing zone, does it, in both, I guess, does it have the size that you can have for, you know, not drive lanes, but basically curb cuts? I mean, I guess, how do we do that, because there's not, if we're going to treat it as a separate thing, we got to treat it all the way, and can you have...
What are you asking, I'm sorry?
Wait a minute, that's not how we view...
It's the leased property.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's what, I know, it's a confusing way to approach it. I mean, I think the whole, the intent is to bring these areas into compliance.
Correct.
One develop, one, not one leasable property at a time on these larger scale developments. But do we have to treat it, I mean, do we treat it as, it's, it's not, it's sort of floating out there, it's not part of the right-of-way.
Really not defined in the way we...
It's got to have a street frontage, it has no, you know, it'd have to actually have a street connection, not a, through a private parking lot.
Well, it would have a street connection, it's just not, you're talking about curb cut versus frontage. I mean, when you talk about subdivisions or lots, you need some kind of frontage to...
Right, so we're almost treating it like subdivision then.
Well, I think that the condition of looking at it as a, on its parcel, that someone has to do with the footprint and the tree commission.
That is correct. Then it does with bulk control.
Yes.
Okay, I think that would, my stomach that better.
So this will go to the shade tree commission?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
I didn't want to start applying all those, and I understand, we haven't been doing that in the past, really, for reasons...
I mean, if they're asking for their curb cut, that would be, a curb cut right in the front of it, that would be a different matter.
Right.
But the fact is, it does have frontage as a lot, it's not, it's not landlocked, because it's really a leased and it's not a fee simple structure.
Right.
I mean, parcel.
The last thing we knew, meet are additional curb cuts on East State Street. So this is good.
Yeah, like what you're looking for.
And shade tree commission, I mean, how it works, it's not going to be an undue sort of burden because we're saying, we're looking at just this property lease area that's a little bit under 20,000 square feet, but if we looked at the whole property that is this development and their tree requirement, does it work out, or do you end up having a lot more trees now?
That's why we're doing it this way, because obviously you got three or four malls out there that are not in compliance with shade tree. So we're treating each individual outlots as a leasehold area, we treat it specifically and try to make it meet, and many times they can't, so then what we do is those, working with the shade tree then, is those trees that maybe couldn't fit on this property have to fit somewhere else on that property that's owned under the same ownership to eventually try to bring all of these malls into compliance with the shade tree ordinance. So it's a one building, one step at a time type process, but it's been working slowly.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, commission members?
Sounds like this can move ahead then.
I would, yeah, I would think the next time we'd be saying this would be as a case, or would we be, was that, what's the determination been made, not...
It's not Title 41, is it?
No. The only one that's a little tricky is this one here, gross floor space increase to less than 25%, well, it's greater than 25%, but it's a new building, so, it does not look like it's Title 41, because it's under 5,000 square feet.
The construction of a non-residential building with less than 5,000 square feet of gross floor area is exempt.
Okay.
14103, so.
Okay, so this is really about the last time we'll see it, except for the tree commission, if I understand correctly, right?
It's interesting to note though, I mean, just setting aside this case specifically though, that a project of this size, or any size, has to go to the shade tree commission but not to the planning commission, just as a point of order or something we may want to think about changing in city code. That seems odd to me though.
You might suggest that to council.
Or maybe, the planning commission would like to suggest.
They'll want us to suggest that, yeah.
You guys are the ones reviewing.
Yeah. I can see where it is a little wrinkle there.
Yeah.
If we could add that to a future agenda item, we can discuss.
Yeah, so I thought, so it had to do with no...
He may be back. We might just do it that way anyways, just so everyone's aware.
Well, again, from my point of view, the Title 41 is a review of the utilities, how they plug in, how the structures are, I mean, this will be something that, you know, you'll be dealing with anyway, because you'll have to say where the drains go and where the water comes from.
Right.
So, you know, and the Title 41, the primary use of that is to delineate how that's going to fit.
For what it's worth, I gave them the checklist for Title 41, told them to need all those requirements, and they're working on that.
That's the right way to do it. Well, that's a good guideline, it's a good checklist.
All right, well, that, we will definitely make that a future agenda item. Any other comments or questions, what we have, attention? I would appreciate you coming in and giving us a little bit more information about the development, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and you get your, you get your map back here if you need.
All right. All right. Next item on the agenda is reports from the city planner and Director Colton Thorstman. Do either of you have reports that you'd like to brief the commission on?
I just have a few things, or maybe just one thing. Last week, we did have the open house and local officials meeting with FEMA about the[1783.91] changes to the flood mapping. We expect that the new flood maps will become law in about 12 months. It's basically going through the machinations with the federal registry. There's publishing requirements and more outreach that they are required to do about that. I have had a lot of phone calls since that meeting from property owners who were not able to make it, so that was good. They did receive postcards in the mail. They sent about 900 around Athens to impacted property owners, so I've had some pretty good discussions and able to provide some more information to people. The flood plain, as a general rule, it's expanding throughout the city, not by much, but there's some subtle expansions. There's a few more homes being added in right around that periphery of the Far East Side neighborhood and then through the Near East Side neighborhood. The Columbus Road area is actually shrinking a little bit, and the floodway on Columbus Road is shrinking too. But we expect that will be, become law probably in about 12 months or so. From a development standpoint, we were told by FEMA and ODNR that anybody who comes in for an application or permit at this point, we should still be treating them with the existing mapping and the existing flood plain regulations. I'm trying to give everybody the new information as well, especially if the new mapping and the new flood plain is going to be a higher build as far as elevation for them, and advising them that they may want to take us to consider building a little bit higher so that they're compliant with the new maps because that may impact their flood insurance premiums down the road. The other thing we've been told through that meeting is that flood insurance, everybody should expect that to be on the rise for people that are impacted, unfortunately.
And so you're telling people to look forward to try and comply with the next set of maps?
That's what we're advising, right. But they are not required to at that point. In the past, they used to tell us that we should be using the best available data, as long as the best available data meant increased flood elevations. This time, they're telling us not to do that. But I'm letting people know that things are being changed, of course, and that you might want to consider a higher elevation if that's what it will become law down the road because that is, in fact, what FEMA is saying the risk is.
Right.
Most areas of the city, it's a question of, you know, a tenth of an inch here and there, two tenths of an inch, not a big issue. I did just recently touch base with somebody who was looking to do, make a small building on, off of Harold, and actually, the flood mapping there, it was a difference of about two feet.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Two feet higher in that area of town. So I advise them that, you know, you're not required to do that, but if you think about it, FEMA is saying that the flood risk is going to be considerably higher. If you build to the current elevation, you'd only be, you'd actually be one foot below the base flood elevation in a year and a half, so your flood risk and your insurance risk might be impacted 10, 20 years down the road.
So if somebody builds something, just hypothetically, if somebody builds something right now and the elevation goes up, now they'd be kind of grandfathered in, but wouldn't they have trouble if they remortgage, or...
They would be, you're always conforming because you're, as long as you're a post-firm structure and firm flood insurance risk map, you're based on, all post-firm structures are post-firm if they were built after March of 1980, when the original maps were adopted by Athens City Council and the original maps were issued and we created the flood ordinance. So everything from that point forward, assuming that you were building based upon the mapping and Title 25 on that date, that your permits were filed and approved, then you are always compliant, essentially. You only run into complications if you do additions or demolish and then rebuild. You now have to come into conformance with any updates, but from FEMA's standpoint, you're, there's not a series of compliance. And that was one of the questions we had. If we're adopting new maps next year, is everything prior to that, that was built between 1980 and 2014, are all of those now grandfathered in as being non-conforming? And I was told that everything is still conforming because they were approved based on the mapping and the ordinance at the time.
Okay, until they have to do a total rebuild.
Yeah, or additions, you bet.
I'm not sure if you understand how this works or not, but so is flood insurance, if you build your structure above the flood plain, you still have, but your parcel is in the flood plain, do you still pay flood insurance? Or is it a different premium rate, or...
All structures, you're still in the flood plain.
Okay.
What you're doing is you're conforming to the requirements for construction, development within a flood plain. So yes, if you build a home today in the flood plain, or if you build a Tim Hortons or anything else like that, if you carry a mortgage on it, you are required to follow, you're always required to follow our development requirements in a flood plain regardless of your financing scheme. But if you have a mortgage by federal law, you are required to pay flood insurance. The option would be if you do your development to the right standards, or if you submit what's called the letter of map removal.
Right.
Depending on the way you constructed it, you may be able to get relief from the insurance requirements.
Okay.
The risk there is that if you do get relief, or if you have your, if you have your home paid off free and clear, you're still in a flood plain. If you experience flood damage, your homeowner's insurance policy will not honor flood risk, and you will not be part of any bailout. There's no such thing as a bailout for private property that was not properly insured for flood risk. So you're basically stuck with a home that may have to be condemned, or a property that may have to be condemned, and there's no public emergency funds that would be available to you to rebuild.
I know at the public meeting there, there were various questions about putting the new maps up so people could look at them. You said you were going to do that, is that...
That should be in process. I provided all of the GIS shape files to the Voinivich School last week on Friday morning and asked them to post them up. I have not checked this week. I haven't received confirmation that they've been updated, but they're aware of it. So I would expect that that'll be up. If it's not by today, it should be up by early next week.
Okay. Is, and the maps really show you the new footprint of the flood plain.
That's right.
But it will delineate the difference. I say, east side of town's one inch, west side of town's two feet.
Right.
Is it possible to get that as a gradient somewhere, or delineate that? I mean, people will look at the numbers and say, yeah, this is 636 and this is 638, and there's a difference there, but I don't, I don't...
The easiest way to do that would be to contact.
Okay.
As far as I can, I cannot discover an easy way using GIS that we can communicate that information.
Make a gradient.
Yeah, the GIS data is just not that robust as far as how somebody could utilize it. So the easiest way to determine that really is just to touch base with me. I'm happy to do it. It's not that difficult. Takes a few minutes on most situations, and we can tell. As we move forward, FEMA will be providing us with a lot more tools that we can use to relay flood risk or inform flood risk. One of the, one of the things they will be giving us is data sets, computer-generated data sets, that I can, we'll be able to determine based on ground elevation on any given point within that flood ma, or flood area, the difference between, or how high that base flood will hit. Whether it's, if you're at the corner of Watts and Morris Avenue, you know, from the grade, as your, as your feet are standing, the flood will be 12.5 inches, for example, right there. As you move towards the river, you'll be able to figure from any given location in there what they expect that that 100-year flood elevation would be based on the existing ground elevation. So from a, if you think about it from relaying information to the public, that'll be a really great tool to say, hey, you're, you're looking at four and a half feet of water right there. What do you have in your home that's within four and a half feet of the, of the ground right now? Think about what would be damaged there, so.
I actually recall the county, previous county planner was trying to do that in certain areas of the county.
Right.
Nelsonville and...
Right. And that's one of the things we can, I would like to be moving forward with, once we get those data sets, would be that's a good way to relay information on the ground. We can put small signage up or paint it somehow on telephone poles or street markings or, what's that?
Benchmarks.
Benchmarks, exactly. We can put that information out there so you can see it as you're in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
To be reminded of where that flood will be when we get it. And it is a win, not a niff, of course. Other than that, I did receive, we, there was a request about a month ago from either me or from the mayor to order some planning commissioners' books. I think Charlene distributed those to you guys.
Mm-hmm.
So those are for you. There's also a, I believe, the American Planning Association Planning Commissioners' update. I've had that on my desk for about a month. I apologize for not distributing them earlier.
Sorry. We just met once.
It's a perfect summer, summer beach reading, right?
All right. Anything, any other items you'd like to have?
Nothing from me.
Essence of Athens, how's that going forward? I know it's not really planned, but...
Yeah, thank you for asking about that. It's going really well. There was an article in the Athens New, or the Athens Messenger earlier, I think this week, or maybe on Sunday, I can't remember which day, that covered, gave a pretty good update on how that's moving forward. We have an ad hoc committee that's convened to kind of review all the information that was given and then try to come up with some suggestions as to how we can put this in motion as far as with our built environment.
Uh-oh.
We expect that there'll be a public meeting, secondary one, probably late August or early September, to try to wrap up and make sure that we're moving in the right direction. It's going well.
And historic preservation has met twice, I believe?
They have met twice. They will be meeting, I believe, the second, I think it's the second Monday of every month, will be their standing meeting, 5:30 PM in the front room of this, the first floor conference room at City Hall. We're starting to work on collecting all of the information that's already out there as far as historic inventories of buildings within the city of Athens that have been submitted through the years up to the Ohio Historic Preservation Office, as well as at the Athens County Historical Society. So we're trying to put all that information together and then sift through it and figure out how to move forward, but those meetings are going well.
All right. Mr. Paskey?
Yeah, I have a couple items, basically updates. The Marizoni Appeals met last Tuesday evening, and they had two cases. The first one was Village Bakery requesting to put a, an addition patio, whatever you may call it, on the front, that they have solar panels on top of, that needed a variance for approaching into the front setback. That variance was approved five to zero, and probably seen there already well under construction on that. The other one was for the Auto Zone out at 912 East State Street requesting to have their own freestanding sign separate from all the other signs in the, or the one freestanding sign for all the other businesses in that mall there, and that variance was denied. So they are looking to increase the size, or talk to the owner about increasing the size of the existing freestanding sign that's out there so they can be put on that as well. So I don't, that's the status of that.
Max is 100 square feet for that?
100 square feet, yes.
For what...
For a one freestanding, for a strip mall, you're allowed one, 100 square foot freestanding sign that all the businesses can be listed on. And they were requesting to have their own sign separate from that one sign, and that was denied. So I do not know off the top of my head the size of their existing sign that's out there, but it's close.
All right. Does that be another example, again, how property lease does not apply to Title 23 or 21? It's really just for shade tree.
Okay.
I guess I don't like this, the shade tree interpretation, that it's not...
The alternative would be to say, okay, you're not conforming. You've just stood an improvement on this particular...
Right.
Plot of land, which would be the entire mall.
Yeah.
Now you have to bring it all to conformity. Stop what you're doing.
Right.
Care of the parking lot, start planting trees.
And in many instances, you can't do that because the parking lots were built to meet the requirements of the building that was built, when it was built.
Right.
So it's, that's why we're doing it a little bit at a time, at least trying to give the facade image going down State Street that bring it into compliance.
Right. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing it, it's just a, it's tough to loosely imply, you know, say this is for shade tree and this is not.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to see, I mean, when we look at these developments, I would like to start considering them as, you know, the entirety of the development.
Okay.
According to bulk controls and stuff. And it might just be to see how it fits in. And this is more for our discussion when we get into the, you know, businesses, the zoning that we had been doing earlier.
But it's a putt. It's a planned unit development.
They are not.
Well, the one, at least, I think one of them is. University Mall is, it was, wasn't it?
We looked, we couldn't find PUDs on any of the malls out on East State Street.
I think they mostly predate them, that's why.
No, no, I honestly, I do think it was, because I remember the environmental review and everything else that came with it, so. If you, well, the planner's office, maybe they didn't follow through.
It could have been when it was in the zoning code, and then when the PUDs moved those subdivisions, it switched the criteria.
It wasn't in the, I mean, it was before. It's sort of in the zoning code.
Yeah.
I keep wondering why we're, why those buildings are being added if they aren't putts, so maybe that's why. Just that was enforced, you know, that...
Well, yeah, maybe.
Administrations of the...
Well, we don't limit the amount of buildings on a property in the manufacturing zone or the...
But we do have parking requirements.
Right.
And that's usually the constraint right there.
Right. But we're not, like, for example, say if this was a Title 41, if it was, the Tim Hortons was 5,000 square feet, we want to be looking at it from a parking standpoint, right? Because we'd be looking at the overall property. We want to hold them accountable on their leasable space to parking.
You'd have to make sure that the Tim Hortons didn't take away required parking for the rest of the building so that the, the large structure is now non-compliant with parking. That's one of the things you'd have to double check for.
And we are doing that.
Okay, so we'll still look at, or you, in your offices review, we're still looking at the size.
Parking for the entire complex overall, yes.
Okay. Very good. All right. Mr. Paskey, any...
Just updates. I got a phone call yesterday from the architect representing Fairfield Suites. They are wishing to have everything submitted to me by August the 1st, and they will be on the August 15th agenda with the planning commission, so...
This is the hotel?
That's the hotel, correct.
And that would be a Title 41, correct?
That is a Title 41, yes. And they are, they did the preliminary with you, and they are doing their engineering drawings as we speak. Also spoke with Texas Roadhouse on Monday. They are trying to coordinate their landscaping issues and trees because they were not able to get enough trees on their leasehold space, and they need to put some elsewhere on the site. They are working with that with the property owner right now, but it is moving forward. They hope to submit to sometime in August, so, from what I was told yesterday. Also, I have on my desk, and I talked to the attorney representing Horizon, two wireless communication applications, they will be coming to, to the planning commission on August the 1st for their first meeting. One of them is a modification at the Monticello Tower, and the second one is a modification on top of the parking garage across the street, so both of those will be coming forward. Two others that are somewhat involved in one, we have a possible lot split coming up at Blackburn Woods subdivision, with a parcel next to it, that Tom Love doll owns, and he's been talking to both of us, and I did receive an email from them this morning, that they would like to be on the planning commission as soon as possible. It's kind of, I think, our opinion at this time, that we'll need planning commission and possibly city council approval, because it would be a variation to the existing subdivision that was approved years ago. So, that's where that one is at, but that's much as I can tell you right now. And then I just got out of the meeting a little bit ago, a little parcel next to, front of Beacon School, at the, where the house was torn down, that is not in the city limits, there, it's likely they will be coming to us requesting annexation, so, for that piece of property. They're working with Beacon School right now, but nothing's defined or definitive yet on them taking that space, so... And as you can see on our map, that's a little tooth missing out there, that's not in the city limits. It is R1 is the property where the school, Morrison, and the church at Beacon are at, R3 where the, is, at that outreach program is at, and the daycare, so I guess it'll be a matter of what the zoning classification would be. Schools and churches, et cetera, are permissible in R1, so that's why that's all, all R1 out there. So if it is worked out with Beacon, if it was R1, it would still work, but if they wish to do something else, commercialized, then that's going to be their request to ask for a different zoning designation.
This is the same owner for the, from the building with the school in it, and that, those two lots, schools are in?
No.
It's a different owner?
The Beacon School, they're...
No, Beacon School, then the two lots, and then the school, it used to be...
It's my understanding that, yes, that property owner purchased.
The property was purchased by Scott Brooks and Ben H, Bren Hayes, and then the new, where the house was just...
Bingo, that's what I was asking. Okay, now, Mr. Paskey, there was one situation on expansion, a sewer, and it may not have gone very far, but the school needed a larger sewer, and we, I think we went behind those lots?
Um, that was something they were talking to, and I told them to get with Andy, I know it's a forced main out there.
Well, I don't know that, it was maybe pre-Andy too, but it's more complex than it looks on the surface, bottom line.